Yeah, seven o'clock. I'll call the meeting to order. Sherry, would you call the board?
Okay. Councilperson Hendricks is absent. Councilperson Farrell.
Here.
Councilperson Carroll.
Here.
Councilperson Meese.
Here.
Councilperson Charles.
Here.
Councilperson Neck.
Present.
Okay, we have the forum. Others present are Mayor Jeffrey, Solicitor Bob Kravitz, myself, Sherry Badman, junior councilperson Joe Moore.
And I think you did mention me, but I am indeed present today.
Yes, present.
Let's begin with a moment of silent reflection or prayer. And I also ask people to be aware that our mayor lost his wife about how many years?
October would be 38 years of marriage.
Thirty-eight.
So thirty-seven.
For any of you who knew her, she was just a delightful small... So... I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You have the council minutes from the meeting of May the 2nd. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
I make a motion that we include the minutes as presented.
Is there a second? Second. Any discussion? All in favor, give your consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? If you care. Bring us to public comment period. The H and L present for a report tonight?
Not yet.
In our packets, we have the minutes of the Salesware Project meeting in May. We all?
It's a copy of yours that came from somewhere.
It's a summary of those. Oh, yeah, I didn't realize where it was from, so I just have to assume. Salesware Chamber of Commerce minutes from the meeting of April 26th. Can I see Helen?
No.
We saw the minutes. You have any other comment about... All right, thank you, Helen.
Warren, I have a few comments if you don't mind.
That's okay. Just take it as standard. You recognize it.
Greetings. Carol Hamlin, president of Salesware Projects Inc. It's been a while since I've been here, but as some of you know, I did officially retire on June 1st after 48 years, so that has freed up my evenings now to be able to come out to meetings like this and other meetings that I'm anxious to get to. So I'm happy to be here. Just very brief, I want to let you know that we added two new board members, Phil Byrd and Sarah Lohr to the SPY board. We also are in the process of having the clock repaired. I know a lot of you have been contacting me about the status of that clock because it is rusty and needed repair, but we were having problems. We got the estimates on the painting and all, but we couldn't find somebody to fix the metal part of the clock, which has to be repaired. And if you looked closely at it, you could see color, and it was held together by black electrical tape. So don't know who did that and when they did it, but we have someone. They've come and looked at it once. They're coming back this week. They might need to be there today. So that is in the process, and we'll have that done by this summer. So I'm happy to say that. As you probably all noticed, our flower are up and hanging. We have the baskets this year, and I think they look beautiful. And I really want to thank Chuck and Bobby Steiner, who did that this past weekend, and they've done it every year, and I think it really makes our town look beautiful. The other thing, too, the farmer's market, there's been a little controversy about that of late, and as you probably know, the farmer's market is run by a separate entity, a private entity, and that committee has been struggling these last few years. So SPY member Sarah Lohr and one of our people who was not in the board that have been coming, Sean Park, and I expected him here tonight to give an update, too, because they just recently met and they are expanding and having coming up with some great creative ideas for the market on Saturday. So I'm happy to see that happening. So that's underway, too, so I'm glad SPY was able to step up and help them. That's pretty much it. The Brew Fest is well underway. As you know, we sold all of our tickets in nine minutes this year, 1,700 tickets, and so we're still really in the heat of finalizing all of the plans to make that happen on July 16th. So I don't know if anybody has any questions for me, but I hope to continue to come and provide updates to you rather than just so many minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Sure happy that you're retired and available.
Me, too.
Is that going to be cool, Mr. Meese?
The only thing I'm going to say is over the Memorial Day weekend, the attendance for the Ford Day weekend was over 1,200 people, and the American Legion was up at the swimming pool handing out ice cream on Memorial Day itself, which was a very nice gesture on Mr. Stoops' part. We also, this past weekend, went up and planted flowers and pots and put them around the swimming pool and some out in front of the entryway to kind of, you know, cover it up a little bit. Things are going well, and the pool looks good, so when it gets hot, come on out.
Thank you, Mr. Meese. Parks Recreation, I see Megan. Say good-bye, please.
Good evening.
Megan.
I apologize for not being here last meeting. The meeting turned out to be very tight this week, and I have two giant papers to write. So to update you very quickly on a couple of things that the board's been talking about. First, I want to give a giant salute to our new recreation coordinator. We are just thrilled with her and her work. The supervised summer playground program, I believe, has... But she had several meetings for information for parents who are interested. She has a handbook with multiple permission slips for people to sign, including for putting sunscreen on kiddos and all kinds of information to follow up if someone's hurt or just needs mom or dad to come back. And she's changed the rules a little. They're no longer allowing people to drop kids off after 10:00 a.m., which I think is really good because it helps with the continuity of the day, so the staff can get a feel for who's here and what we're going to do and how to plan things and not be disrupted by someone who comes at lunchtime or after. So kudos to Mackenzie. Sorry she's not here to hear it, but perhaps we can mention to her. A couple of other things that we have talked about include we had a very exciting day of action at Little Moon Way, too, with volunteers from PPL helping to put in another utility pole so we can put up the light, which I think is really awesome. And then they did some other work down there, some stacking of firewood and things. It's just really prepared, so we have a cold winter to go. One of the things we are looking for is donations of more skates. Walt has told us that a lot of the skates are being broken because we allow people to borrow them. There's no charge, and they're not really given any instruction on how to use them, and they're not lacing them tightly enough so that their ankles are twisting and the blades are getting broken. So the board itself is working on a sign, which will present to you, like, you know, just certain information, like, this is what we want to do, but just to let people know you need to tighten the laces so we don't keep breaking the blades or there won't be ice skates to use anymore. I'm trying to stay brief. I understand I'm very chatty sometimes, but I wasn't here last month, so I give an extra five minutes right now. Okay. The Pump House Park Summer Concert Series begins tomorrow, and I do hope all of you will come, everybody here, because Kay Spudelmeyer, and this isn't... We're trying to keep it quiet. We don't want to scare her away, but she served this community for decades in coordinating those concerts, and she did a marvelous job, and she's stepping down, and we have a new director, Elaine Harrell, stepping in. And tomorrow, we're just going to acknowledge Kay's contributions and appreciate her. I know I'll have my crew there to help sort of connect some things, but I'd just love to see all of you there, too, just to really demonstrate that appreciation for Kay and all that she did. And also to enjoy good music, because it actually is very good music.
Is it time to tell story?
Seven... 7:30, actually, right? Yes, 7:30. The first one said 7:30. We also had a thing, and I'm just, I'm going to share this with you, too, to give you an update. At Major Anthony Sealein Park, the sign that sits in the dog park is deteriorating and needs to be replaced. The people from AYSO approached us and asked if they could make it an AYSO sign. It's nine feet wide. The board unanimously decided declined. They're not in favor. It's not just an AYSO park. We want to make sure the whole community feels welcome there. So we threw some ideas around, and we're still kind of doing that, but we're working on, for, I believe, next year's budget, making a Major Anthony Sealein Park, or bringing the sign. It is done. From the Kids Grove side of the parking lot, as you enter Pettid West on Sassevray Street, we're currently sitting on the Kids Grove side. I don't know that they mind, but we're going to make it so people sort of understand and put it into the dog park and give AYSO a section to make a sign of their own to hang up with it. And also, at Mackenzie's request, and we all agreed with her, the whole board, putting some information... I don't know what it's called, but there's a little bar that goes across the bottom of the sign. We're going to put information on that about supervised summer parks program so that people know where to turn when they drop their kids off for this activity. It's kind of, well, that's our purpose anyways, FYI, information for you, but if you have suggestions or even questions about that for us, we would definitely appreciate the input. The Kids Grove restaurants, as I understand it, were being renovated at the final meeting in April, and were nearly completed, so I'm thinking, I have not heard, I think they're finished now. I haven't been over there for a while, but Mr. Bowersocks had come back in and accepted the contract to do that work. One other thing, last, not, so the April meeting, Vivian Winnick came to speak with you and shared, she lives in the High Street Manor apartment complex and liked to go across the street to the Major Anthony Sealein Woods to walk, and she shared some concerns. So the board is throwing some ideas around between us and hope to come with a recommendation to you on what to do, because we do feel that the sedimentation goes across the asphalt path is actually a public danger, and now that we've been made aware of it, we do have our responsibility to try and figure out. We're not really sure what to do because it's sitting right at the water table, so there's not a lot of solutions, but again, advice or information, guidance would be appreciated if you have, I mean, maybe we can throw together and come up with something, all of us. And on that note, one thing to bring to you for a personal thing, my family and I went for a bike ride yesterday. Out Market Street, South Market Street, all the way down across, maybe we went for a while. We just caught the rain. It was kind of funny. But on the way back in town, in the borough, on the eastern side of Market Street, my daughter had a bike accident because some of the residents down there had not trimmed their hedges back from the sidewalk, and she had to go onto the street and then go back up. And there were sort of two things there, and I'm bringing this to you as a citizen right now, not really the board of Parks Recreation. The paint that's used on the ramps is really slippy. I don't know if there's anything we can do to change that. She has about a two-and-a-half inch gash on her knee right now, and it won't... She's having trouble with it because it's on her knee, so every time she bends her knee, she kind of disrupts the healing process. But if there's another way to just notify the citizens down there, I'm pretty sure we have an ordinance on the books about keeping your hedges trimmed back. They're well over the sidewalk. There's not even much water on the sidewalk. But that would be, it's a recreation issue, but it's also a personal... And my kids would like to do their route again, and I'd like to keep them on the sidewalk on that part of Market Street, just for the, where people drive, the quickness of the drivers. Do you have any questions for us, for me?
Just a comment, because I do a lot of walking in the borough, and people just don't realize that the shrubbery and trees that look so beautiful do, in fact, start to encroach on the public sidewalk. The borough's policy has been, as far as I understand it to be, they react to complaints.
Okay.
So what I will occasionally do is really at that overhang, I'll walk into a tree or something, a tree branch, so I take a picture of it, a selfie or something, if you will, email it to staff, and they'll send a letter.
It's, okay. It's on South Market near the distributor.
The beer store. Yeah, I know where you're talking about.
Yeah, the house itself looks a little uncom, so I'm thinking perhaps whoever lives there is not really able to care for things.
Oh, okay.
And that's just my guess. Just speculation. Thank you, though.
Thank you. Next on the list is the Isle of Cube group. We have two items, I see, Concur with Eschar regarding industrial waste permit and grease trap installation. Would you like to address us?
Well, actually, I'm not sure we're so much addressing the council as I understood from Mr. Williams, you would be taking action on...
The draft industrial discharge permit that they...
Correct.
Everybody received a copy of that. I think the only change that Paul is suggesting is item number three, where you share your results with Eschar to approve the borough also.
Correct.
In that share. And then with those changes, he's recommending that council accept that discharge permit.
So we're ready to take that up. Do you have anything you'd like to comment on that particular part?
Uh, no.
Okay. So we are ready to have a motion to adopt that.
To make a motion that we adopt that?
That's second. Will that seconded for a discussion? All in favor, give your consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Careless? Second portion, required grease trap transinstallation. Heard on that?
I'm not sure why that's on the agenda, so...
That would be opening in food service, a grease trap is required, and that's just council action.
This is the department's...
They would be required to install grease trap there in place of business. And I just need a motion.
And then we... Do the proper paperwork and install the grease trap?
Motion to require the grease trap, any second?
You won't. Here's my question. We are not serving any food there.
Okay. Let me just do this in proper order. If we get a second, then we'll be ready for a discussion.
Or sorry.
No problem. Is there a second? I'll make a second. Okay. We're being seconded. Time for a discussion.
That's basically it, and we're not serving any food out of that establishment. Basically, just sort of drinks, anything that comes in there. It's a regular food situation, or you order, a sandwich is going to come in, a sandwich wrapper that's going to go in a trash can. It's not getting washed off and rinsed down, maybe in the sink.
I believe it says beverages also. I believe in the ordinance, it says any restaurant that serves beverages or food, and everybody else has to do it, including churches, and so to keep it fair for everybody, that's why you have to install.
Other comments?
Yeah, under definitions, Section 115-25, and fairly broad, it was enacted back in December of 2009. All hotels, restaurants, boarding houses, cafeterias, attorney houses, sororities, sorority houses serving food, church, or other nonprofit entities, kitchens serving food, clubs or other social organizations serving food, commercial food preparation facilities, and any other establishment where food is prepared and/or served, shall install at its own expense a grease trap with the pipe that goes on from there. And then underneath the definition of restaurant and hotel, any establishment providing lodging facilities or serving meals or serving beverages or any combination of the two or more of said services to the general public would be considered subject to this order.
They're pretty simple to install, really, but it's not a big deal. They're not marked.
I mean, they have requests for waivers.
It's not a big ticket. It's not a big money item.
Do we have one down at the Pump House?
Pump House, yeah. We had requests for waivers, and they've been denied.
We even installed ours here. We haven't been around here.
You can put it in yourself.
Can you give some idea of what kind of expense?
Couple hundred bucks.
Yeah.
You know, maybe $200.
For what they would need, unless you go preparing for it.
Do you have any future thoughts of serving food?
From that location, probably not.
Now, my understanding is, though, while it's under construction, it's a lot easier and cheaper to put it in before rather than after.
Right. I... I mean, I can see I would call up in the ordinance with the definition of the establishment, but that's not a good one there.
And back in O'Hammond, with the ordinance, we got a lot of flack from the local churches and places, and we had to do it, so we did it. It's one of the plans by Eschar, try to get a control over our efforts.
After last month, you came to us, and there was all the issues of some things are not being said and not said, everybody's not on the same page, and we got everybody on the same page. Is this one of the things I'd like to know? Was this overlooked, or did you know about it upfront, that we knew, we would talk about the grease traps? Did this blindside you, is what I'm asking?
The grease trap, no, no.
Okay, so we knew about it when you came in, talked to Paul, and knew not only the issues that we had?
I, I... Well, we've certainly known about all the issues with Eschar, absolutely, and a grease trap thus far has been, quite frankly, the least of our worries.
Okay, but you knew about it upfront, though. It wasn't something that just blindsided you recently?
No, no, no.
Okay.
We knew there was that potential, certainly.
Okay, but I just want to make sure, because we've been struggling for over the years to make sure when people come in, we were giving the right information and making you aware of things. Now, we've had the issue with Eschar, so that's been an ongoing problem, but we want to make sure that we're trying to do digital on all parts through the office, that we're getting the information when people are coming in saying, hey, we're going to do this, and we're lining things up so they know what they're doing.
And we would have read the ordinance as to why we would be required. When Paul first mentioned it to us, we said, well, we're not serving food, but it did mention it to us, and I was kind of dropped at that point until it got to this point. Now, with that grease trap, do we need to contract with a company that has to come in and log everything, and like, once the borough checks them, the borough checks them?
We do it. Usually we have a inspection once a year, so our crew comes out, and they'll knock in the door to say, hey, and then that's...
You can clean it yourself.
Yeah.
Clean it out yourself, keep track of how much you're taking out, if any.
It might be good for documentation, just put a date and time, who did it, and that way you're showing documentation.
If you can go on our website, there would be grease trap log.
Log, correct.
If you fill that out, that works.
For a discussion on the motion? Ready for the question? All in favor, give your consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay?
Who is the one?
Me. I'm not opposed to the permit. I just think it's a foolish requirement when it's only a beverage and there's no serving food.
It's the grease trap issue that you...
The grease.
Yes, okay.
Why did we have to vote on this in the first place if it's an ordinance?
We wanted to put it on.
We don't vote on...
Usually not. But all thought was necessary.
We wanted to put it on.
Of guidance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have anything else?
No.
You're good to go?
Good luck.
Others in attendance, I see Mr. Bill Siegel, a colleague, a senior...
Your agenda, item number four, under your Finance and Budget Committee, which is affecting the Olmstead project. We're here to speak for that one, councilor.
Brings us to committee, board reports, Finance, Budget Committee, Mr. Charles.
I signed, I signed up.
Oh. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, yes, go ahead and introduce someone.
Vincent Stoops, here tonight as a service officer from the American Legion Post down here, wanted to give you guys a follow-up on Memorial Day, and also wanted to thank Paul and Shelley specifically for their help. The two of them made sure that the equipment here, needed here at the borough was ready to go and had it all coordinated, made sure the building was open so we could use the bathroom seamless, no problems, and very, very, very much appreciated. So at least we said our, our appreciation. We had a good crowd. Might have been slightly smaller than in past years, but not really noticeably smaller. Might have been just... But didn't seem to have any problems other than one audio problem, which I mentioned to a couple of people, so they couldn't quite hear, so we're going to adjust that for next year, try to make sure that everybody can hear from all the different spots around. We didn't have any complaints regarding the parade or the ceremony, but if you've heard any, let me know. Everybody seemed to be well-formed and ready to go for the parade. We had lots of kids lining the streets, and families ready to watch and ready to go by. In the afternoon, like Mr. Meese said, we had the stuff up at the pool. An excellent, I was told, it had 645 people on Memorial Day alone, so out of 1,200, that's pretty awesome, and very much appreciations to the mayor as well, who participated sort of both sides by offering comments during the ceremony, as well as making sure that the bathhouse was beautiful when the kids walked in on Memorial Day. So that's sort of the Memorial Day recap. Oh, and we served 350 portions of Rita's in one hour. So that was how fast it was going through, and they had hit, they told me, our numbers last year were right over 400, and they had told me they hit over 400 by 2:00 through the gate. So it was a good day. We got lucky with the weather. They were creating thunderstorms. But are there any questions about the Memorial Day ceremonies or anything like that? Plans for next year? Probably to do everything exactly the same. To date, we haven't hit up council for any Gelenet trust, but there's some ideas and the works we might for next year, maybe just to maybe hit that thousand, that thousand person barrier and try to get the people through the gate. Any questions? Awesome.
Is there anyone else I overlooked? If there are any who would comment here. Apparently not. Mr. Charles?
Yes, the Finance Committee met today and reviewed the bill, so it was nothing abnormal. I just want to note that on the spring cleanup, we collected 55.5 tons. I believe last year was 47, and the year before was 53. So it runs 45 to 55 tons.
Well, if you remember correctly, like we discussed today, it snowed right before the borough cleanup, so some of the stuff was heavier because of the snow.
And the year after was flooded, it was always a lot less, too.
Yeah.
Because we had the dumpsters there for months. So I make a motion that we pay the bills as reviewed today.
I'll second that. All in favor, give your consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Careless?
We have one tax exoneration.
It's Betsy E. Dunlap. She was deceased for years 13, 2014, $5.50 per year.
I make a motion that we approve that exoneration.
Seconding that. All in favor, give your consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Careless?
The third item is to approve, we've got, we got... We got the grant, a GEP grant for $3,000 for the environmental education program this summer, and I make a motion that we accept this grant.
I'll second that. All in favor, give your consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Careless?
And the last item is to award the bid for the elevation project, and that's on our pink sheet. This was for leasing two homes at 215 South Second Street and for 108 South Third Street, and the road bid was $174,800 for the combined two properties, and I make a motion that we award this bid to the apparent road bidder, D.B. Construction.
Is there a second? I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor? Well, we have...
May I address the board?
Oh, yes, that's your... Thank you.
Thank you. Terry Probst is with me, and Terry did all the hard lifting on this, so I get to just do the heated part of this. The board, the council... The board, the council will recall, there was a lot of discussion about the one oh eight and the adjacent one oh six property improvements on Third Street. The way the project was bid was for the contractors to bid the elevation of both units, both the South Second Street unit and the South Third Street unit, and within our bidding documents, it was included by the engineer that the contractor had a responsibility to, term he used was pin or secure the foundation of the adjacent home on the sixth. The troubling part of that is that it is a deteriorated structure by the structure that's been condemned. The, the engineer did not define pinning the foundation, he did not write a specification. He left that to the means and methods of the contractor, which I think was probably a prudent decision, and I believe was in the recommendation of your legal counsel. The reason we wanted to approach the board this evening, I think, is two-fold. First, to reinforce the importance of the solicitor's review of the performance bond and insurance on this project. We are working about five feet from an adjacent structure that you neither own nor control, so we want to be sure that the contractor has the adequate protections for the project. Secondly, we wanted you to understand that we are not making any other improvements to that property, and the means and methods for, for pinning or securing that foundation is at the discretion of the contractor to whom you're going to act on this evening relatively to order. It has not been defined by your engineer, it has not been defined by any, any party here at the council or in C D C O, but the, the one view, all will be fully implied with the status that is. So when we are done, the one oh eight South Third Street property will be elevated several feet to be made to meet the emergency management guidelines, the adjacent property will still be a condemned lighting structure, unchanged for all intents and purposes. Wanted to just brief that, brief the council on that, so you get a full understanding of that. Carrie, is there anything I missed that we need to add?
No, I think he covered everything.
Well, your caution is probably good, my father worked in construction for a utility company in Philadelphia, and he used to tell me that before they did work where they're concerned about the adjacent structures, partying all, they always took pictures, so that the reported crack is evident before as well as after, not, oh, you cracked my building, even though it's condemned, it's still owned by a private party.
And I believe, I'll confirm this, but I believe the contractor is obligated to take photographs, however, we don't have access necessarily, we don't have access to the structure because it is private, and they may or may not allow us access to the inside of the structure. I'm also not sure what the stability of the structure itself is to have the contractor enter it to take photographs, so we'll have a photograph of the exterior certainly, but I don't think we can do a whole lot of that.
Any questions?
Great. Who wrote the, the, the description part? Is that just something thrown together, or is that something that is a guideline?
When you say the description in the bid document itself?
Like, yeah, yeah, so it says raised dwelling, over water, like, is that official?
That was written by the engineer as part of the bid document.
Okay, my only question is, I thought we were going to use, there's no definition of what the flood clean is, and I thought we were going to use best available data instead of the, under your flood clean? Is that something we have to specify?
We're using best available data.
It's a typical best.
Okay, is that, all right. Yeah, there's specific elevations called out within the bid documents.
Okay.
You're looking at a summary page of about a two-inch document.
Right, that would be my, that would be a question.
Yeah, we weigh them, if they weigh less than five pounds, they don't cut them.
Any other questions?
Do you mind?
Um, I guess two things I brought up, my other thought, because with the best practice, because we know there's pending changing in that flood, okay, so we're basing it on what's existed, correct?
The best available data today.
That's right, that's today, okay, because they're looking at changes. And when the contractors are in there and we're taking the lowest bid, my understanding is, do you not, with the questions you brought to us tonight, was that we're making sure that the contractor is bonded correctly, insured correctly, and you sort of throwing it back seems like to our solicitor, make sure that that's correct, when isn't it part of the process that you have screened and made sure he's met all the, because they need a lot of requirements for you guys for this to happen? So I mean, I don't, I don't want to put our solicitor in additional...
That's usually what we do.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, this, this would be the normal and routine approach. We have written into the bid documents all the federal requirements, which include the performance bond, the pension bond, a bid bond was included at the time of bid in the form of a check, and insurance requirements were written into the document. The reason I raise the question for the solicitor's review is ultimately if there's an issue, your solicitor will be who defends or takes action on behalf of the council. I want to be sure the solicitor has an opportunity between the time of your notice of intent award and we actually sign the documents, that the solicitor has an opportunity to see those documents and know that he's comfortable with the way they prepare and present.
Well, the way you presented it, it just felt as though that because in the past, I, maybe that was done, and the solicitor said, yes, I will have to do that. You brought it up to the surface, so it's made me aware and saying, okay, do we, have we not done that, or is he saying he has? So, but that's, that answers my question.
Thank you, and that's the reason I brought it up, to raise your awareness of it, because I believe on this particular project, there is some exposure, there goes beyond, above and beyond, and more and more exposure, and so I wanted council to be privy to that as you move into the project. The other thing is, these bids are markedly less than the next lowest bidder, and so that also raises concern. So from our experience, when we see some of the things that we've seen in this whole process, I just felt it was important to come counsel and make aware of the concerns.
Is there anything else that we should be covering ourselves? Should we be going out taking pictures? Should we, you know, are we depending on the contractor or a subcontractor to do something, and then we come back six months from now and something does occur?
Will Peters take care of this? Will Peters take pictures? The engineer will have the contractor submit a recording, whether it's videotaping, pictures, and then they approve it for any work done, to make sure everything's been good.
We had, we had a situation with this building, where supposedly pictures were supposed to be taken, and all of a sudden, some pictures weren't available, whatever, now, so I mean, I'm just saying, to protect ourselves, because we have this close proximity of a raising of a building and possibly coming back on a building that is worth nothing to get money out of this for nothing.
What we did at the time of bid opening, we reviewed with the engineer's representative, the requirement for the contractor to videotape or photograph the structures and to provide a copy of that to the engineer for their review to make sure it's complete, and then a copy will be provided to the borough. Additionally, I can tell you knowing Terry's approach to projects of this nature, she probably has fifty pictures of that structure in her file right now, so.
I'd like to amend my motion to read that an agreement not be signed by the borough until receipt of payment, performance bond, and certificate of insurance are in place.
So we have, that's...
You made an original motion?
I made the original.
Yeah, my second, is that something that's going to...
That's, I think that's an excellent amendment.
Yes.
I'll, I'll accept the amendment.
Which, which has to be in the name of the contractor. Right?
Naming, naming the borough is the best issue.
It's the beneficiary of the bar. Any further discussion? Ready for the question?
No, yeah, just to explain it, I made a motion to award the contract to the lowest bidder, so the agreement not be signed by the borough until this payment of the performance bond and the certificate of insurance is in place. I mean, that kind of wraps it all together there.
Good to hear it. Good to hear it, accepted. Okay, have it?
Yeah. That's normal, they'll all come in at half foot four.
Oh, we'll cover it, yeah. I think that's true.
All in favor of the motion? Give your consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you. And that's the last item from finance committee.
All right. Public services facilities, I have just absences, I guess we have no report there. Are you, have you anything sharing?
We do have a meeting Friday with, Shane coming Friday? Oh, no, that's us. With, Clark County County, discuss recycling opportunities, but we'll bring that back to you.
Urb administration, Pete Carroll?
Yep, the only thing I have is, got some estimates on the bus enclosure that we talked about here on, on those street, but we just haven't figured out where the funds are going to come from yet. We're talking between...
I'm going to talk to Corby, and he's off for two weeks.
Okay, all right. Did you want to share that with them about Corby?
Corby, we had a little job injury, period surgery on Friday, so he'll be out for two weeks, and after that, it's likely to be for a while also.
Got nothing else, all right? Thank you. Committee activities, public affairs, Mr. Leece?
We have a request for a street closure on University Avenue from Udrock to West Pine. On Sunday, July the tenth, this is the Antiques on the Avenue, it's an annual event, we have pre-approved this in January, everything is in place, so I make a motion that we accept this.
Is there a second to the motion?
I second.
All in favor, give your consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries?
The second request is to waive the benefit fees for the Seal and Stroke Stroll Arts, crafts, and sidewalk sales, that's July eighth and ninth, and also the following weekend, fifteenth and sixteen. This, this would be a great idea that the chambers come up with, expand this and have younger kids, artists and stuff getting down there, and I believe it's going to, you know, help enhance the Seal and Stroke downtown, so I make a motion that we accept a waiver on the, on the fees.
I second that.
Who would second it? All in favor, give your consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries?
The last one we have is for the Tot Tot Trot, last year was the first year, so this is, this will probably turn into an annual event and stick around for a while. I have been in contact with them, they have everything in place, I've talked to the chief of police and the emergency services people, and so I make a motion that we approve this request.
I second.
All in favor, give your consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries? Thank you, Mr. Leece.
I, I do have one other thing that I want to say that I didn't bring up in the beginning for this, for the Central Pole. We're putting together this year towards, towards the middle to the end of the season, some scuba diving lessons that are going to be held at the swimming pool. We're, we're contacting all of the emergency services people in the area, not just Seal and Stroke, you know, we're contacting homeless or smoking, they have lots of little poor travel, Winfield, Sunbury, Norrie, just to see if there's any interest in, in getting certifications for, you know, water rescues or anything of that nature. I just wanted to bring out, and it's open to the public, if anybody's interested in taking scuba diving lessons, I need to contact the recreation coordinator, and we'll get you signed up.
And usually, that's a, you have to take the, the equipment?
Right, yep.
Thank you. Next is personnel, that's myself, I have no report on personnel. Public safety committee, Mr. Neff?
No report.
Planning commission?
Nothing there.
Nothing zoning.
Nothing on zoning? Civil service?
No report.
Shade tree commission, we do have the minutes of the main meeting, nineteen sixteen, they're busy, they just have the minutes. They've got nice participation with those new trees. Administrative reports, Mayor Reed.
The council should have a couple of months for April, March, and April's reports. Chief just came back on duty after having a couple of weeks off, just spent some time in the sun before he deploys, I think his career in the military, I believe. And I also was informed that Sunday, they initiated the ten-hour schedule for the officers.
I'll make that repeat. Any questions?
Nothing out of order.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, solicitor, Mr. Cradys.
This, last week, we had a meeting, actually a status conference with Judge Udrock regarding the Francis R. Gelnert Irrobono Trust. We reviewed certain documents that were presented by Attorney Swineheart on behalf of the trust. They've given us the tax returns for the last five years, they've given us monthly reports, and we're now waiting for the accounting for the inception of the trust until December thirty-first, two thousand fifteen. So the judge was pleased to hear that, and we made some progress with regard to the trust with regard to the appointment. Now, Mr. Swineheart was asked by Judge Udrock, picked together a proposed order, and it's been reviewed, some clients have been received from council president, Renisky, and basically what the law and the shores is, we're going to, at least on an interim basis, have Fulton Bank and a, appointed as a successor trustee to Mr. Heinsohn, and Mr. Widen Slager will remain as trustee also, and will file within fourteen days a day as order his first partial, first and partial accounting of the trust from December first, two thousand eleven to December thirty-first, two thousand fifteen, and provide us and the Office of Attorney General, Chartered Trust Amortization Section of the Bureau. And one thing they did come up with, and the judge was pleased to hear, the, there's some ambiguity in the trust with regard to how much you would pay the successor trustee if it remained a double national bank, that's been resolved, and the successor trustee compensation will be fixed, same as the other trustees at zero point eight-five percent of the corpus of the trust on yearly basis, and that's more specifically set forward in paragraph six, with paragraph eight, which was the part we were having some difficulty with, with the additional fee schedule from our double national, have that fee set by their rates is no longer going to be applicable to anyone in the future for the trust. And finally, President Renisky come up with another point that we are going to see if council would like to require, and that point is that the, I don't know if the fiduciary code, we're allowed to put a provision in the trust that the borough, as the sole beneficiary of this trust, would have a say in actually nominating or appointing the trustee in the future, the successor trustees, so that we would have a chance in the future to review the document, see how things are going, and perhaps get other persons or entities to bid on becoming trustee, and then we could proceed accordingly. That way, we're not blocking this council and or any future council to say, oh, well, Fulton Financial is our trustee from here on out, this will allow council an opportunity to make some additions or changes. So if council is okay with that, we'll include another paragraph in here, probably substitute it for number four, and then have number four be number five, which is the interim order remaining effective until a final order is made, which will probably follow after we get a chance to review the account.
I'd like to make a comment on why I oppose that addition. There's a section in the Uniform Trust Act in Pennsylvania that says, when you have a trustee of an Irrobono Trust that's a corporate trustee, you cannot remove them unless you find fault, you have to prove it, if they don't want to resign because you asked them, you have to go to court. I'm trying to reduce that burden to future council, early councils. So we write into the trust that we do in our document that the trustee serving has to be very responsive to the sole beneficiary by way of proper fees, service, earning their way, because this is a perpetual trust. It will go on when technologies will have changed, banks will have been acquired, merged out of existence, and I don't want the future councils to have to go to court to make, to change trustees. So if they will agree to this, it will give this council of all future councils the right to say to the serving trustee, you're not doing the job, if you don't do better, then we're going to change trustees, that's the purpose of that.
Well, in the section three there where it says a fixed rate at point zero eighty-five percent. If we go to, you know, out for an R F P, can another bank give us a lesser amount? amount?
Yeah, they can. They'll go back to court and have that order changed.
Or should we just put maximum?
Well, this is language right out of the trust law.
I can tell you that in the current environment, I have studied bank trustee fees, when we have clients with large amounts of money to invest, and .085 is not unreasonable. It's in the medium range. I've seen some charge 1%, I've seen some charge 5% for funds in excess of $5 million. So I, I looked at that, I thought, you know, that's okay.
I thought for competitive, maybe another bank would go less.
Well, they can't come back, they can always go back.
If we get that lower paragraph as a part of this order, we can say to the trustee, it appears you're no longer competitive. Would you like to remain as trustee, change your fee, or we'll pick another trustee?
So we're asking council if that suits with that amendment, to propose amendment here and or, I will get back to Mr. Swineheart. How that inserted, will you submit this for Judge Hurok to sign? So we need a motion and a second.
Do you amend that?
Yeah, I do. It really, I was sort of surprised when they committed, I thought we were going to get somewhere along the line, but not this far they committed, and they said they were going to get this back.
And that's with adding that comment that...
Yeah, I'll make that motion with the, with the amendment that you indicated. Pete, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, give your consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Any others?
And later on this month, we're going to be taking some additional declarations in the Esper case, so that's going to be my role.
Thank you. The borough engineer has submitted an update on pending projects, that's in your materials. We also have one from Larson Design, I guess they have nothing to report.
We did get comments back from his, his foremister. We received correspondence that they were looking for.
Bring us to Urban Treasure, Sheriff Crabb.
Everybody has a copy of this month's report, if there's any questions.
I make a motion that we approve this as presented.
I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor, give your consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
I think we have a copy of Borough Manager's Report from May. He's highlighted some items in bold that he figured were touching. And also, we have a resolution, 2016-05. This is required as part of the decorative streetlight project with the Scott and Melanie Schaefer to require a permanent easement for the installation and maintenance of the control panel.
I make a motion that we approve resolution number 2016-05.
I'll make a second one. Any discussion? All in favor, give your consent by saying aye.
Aye.
This resolution protects both sides with regard to the transfer tax, since we're accepting the either police manual for condemnation, so it saves some privacy.
Thank you.
The PSA recall comes forward right now. I guess nobody's going to go. We won third place for our newsletter, so we will be accepting that and we're tomorrow in a lunch.
Can we give a ten? Bring us to zoning. You have in your packet a list of somebody in permanent issue. I think it's been very busy. And Parks and Recreation Report, there's one in your packet.
That's from Mackenzie.
It's, it's orange. Any other, any questions on, it's nice to hear that Megan Love is impressed with her work. And if anybody gets a chance and looks at the draft that she was talking about, and she went in great detail, you know, I think, I was impressed. She really puts a font and will have, so if you have a chance, it's right out in front of you.
In front of the package.
Yeah, it's very, very extensive and it's very clear to the parents.
There is a program, Discover Scuba Day, July 10th, 6:30.
Yeah, I think it's, it's $150, I think that's all, and it was in the paper too. It's a good article, it's pretty cheap. Bring us to Seals, you have the municipal authority. No report there. We have the minutes from Esra in our packet. I've seen Mr. Williams attended at last meeting to ask some questions on the chemistry. And Island Northeastern Snider Toyota Authority, no report there. This brings us to new business. Does anyone have any new business to bring to the council?
I just, I have a question. Tomorrow night, we have the concert at the Buzzing Bowl. Is the chief having his meeting at 7 o'clock tomorrow night in community room?
Yes, he is.
Okay.
Yeah, that's...
Okay. I was hoping, the Daily, I didn't want to be here. So they had a nice article in the paper about it, but it would be nice to have a reminder in the paper tomorrow morning on that.
She called today, so I'm sure she's going to put something else in.
Okay.
And I did have somebody contact me, they are attending, so hopefully this will work out with him tomorrow night for him.
Pete and I were there last...
Yeah. Well, I was planning here, they're coming, so. It's June 7th, that's tomorrow, at 7:00 PM in the community rooms in the basement.
So no other new business, I think, from the mayor? Any other public comment from the public or president tonight? We have a meeting for the executive sessions? And I believe we're ready for a motion to adjourn.
I shall move.
Second? All in favor, give your consent by saying aye.
Aye.
That's a fair...
Record is 7:15.
7:15.
7:15.
7:15.
7:15.
7:15.
7:15.